History, there is a troublesome history on this property. The question is, why is this attractive today to Tony Reagan and Rich Bishop? Why are these developers interested in the property today? And I'll give you some obvious characteristics. It's a large piece of property. It's just short of 28 acres, which in the metropolitan area is an attractive item. It is attractive because it's big enough to create its own land use environment. Yes, we're next to some high tension power lines. Yes, we have a railroad line through the property. But with this kind of acreage, you can connect to different streets. You can create a new land use environment. And it reminds me of, you know, something like the claret towers in Verona. People still go to Verona, they buy single-family houses. But that project is, has created its own little ambient environment that has been a very successful issue. And that's a project that again climbed the first bridge of the mountain. They're watching Mountain Why? Because they got the New York skyline. Another feature of this property is once you're up about four stories, you can see the New York skyline. And in fact, it will be largely uninterrupted because you also have the view of the river. No one's going to be building there. So this is a guaranteed view of the New York skyline. You also in the past have had a history of typical with industrial areas contamination. Well, the properties have been and are being cleaned up. And nothing is going to happen on this until all the environmental laws are satisfied. But what has happened is that the owners have invested now and are in the process, have essentially followed the regulations for cleaning up the properties. So they're ready to go. And that is something new that hasn't happened in the past. One of the reasons apparently why those disappeared is because of the cost of cleanup was too high. This has access to Washington Avenue and Route 21, both significant traffic carriers. And that's a significant feature. Also, I think important are not only these physical characteristics, but the timing of this. You read the New York Times this morning. One of the articles is about, is not only is the population growth refocusing on urbanized areas, but for the first time in a long time, the new job growth is not in suburban areas, it's in the urbanized areas. And it's, yeah, I mean, you'll see these articles coming out periodically, but they show the wrong, the strong trend of refocusing into areas that have good highway, mass transit, and already a collection of jobs that again are increasing. There is a phenomenon that is simply associated with the population growth and the characteristics of that growth. And I'm, I think I'm Exhibit A here. I'm a baby boomer. And the answer is, I have a large single-family house and my kids are gone. So I need some other place eventually to go to. So that's Exhibit A. My daughters are Exhibit B because they're millennials. They're young people, they're out of college, they're in the workforce, they want an urbanized environment that has mixed uses, access to mass transit. And those so-called bookends of the population are a strong trend. That's why you're seeing success in some of the urbanized areas like Jersey City. Jersey City has now, and you would never believe this 10 years ago, but it has a census tract that's in one of the wealthiest in the United States. And that's because of this phenomenal growth and the interest in millennials, not necessarily in the classic single-family house in the suburbs, but a more urbanized environment where you can walk to places and you can take advantage of mass transit and you have a household that doesn't have to have two and a half cars, but can survive with one cars along with, one car along with mass transit. Another aspect of this property is that it's isolated. It's not in the middle of a single-family area. And that means two things. You have flexibility in what you can put on the property. And it also means that you can insulate surrounding properties from any kind of adverse effects. There is also a significant trend in attracting money from foreign investors. And why? Because the United States economy is stable compared with what's happening around the globe. And so not only are people looking to buy real estate in the United States and particularly metropolitan areas, but it's looked at as a safe place to purchase real estate. In the green binder that you have, on Section 4, Greenwich Realty Advisors has a study in there. And I invite you to read it because it talks about the demand for this type of a mixed-use project. It's significant. And while what's in the book is a summary of it, the full study, which the board members could request it, is like 184 pages. So it's a lot of information that hopes to give you confidence that there is a strong market for this type of housing. So given this situation, you know, the question that you as elected officials have to answer is, is why is this good for Belleville? And I would invite you to consider several things. It's clearly a large project. It's large in acreage, it's large in height, it's large in scale, it has inherently a commercial component to it. First of all, the reason it's large is because it has to accommodate the substantial land costs. One of the problems with this area is that the owners have for years and years requested top dollar for the site and no one could come up with a project that could stomach that kind of high cost and particularly the cost of cleaning up the site. Well, this developer, through negotiations, has purchased part of the site and has a contract for the remainder of it. So a deal has been struck. It is a mixed-use project. And that means that along with the housing, there will be non-residential uses. And frankly, both of these are ratables. Because it's well-known that taller housing, taller buildings produce smaller households and smaller families. And what it really means is there's more of a ratable base per person in this kind of project. Because these are not just low rises, the answer is it's a different style of construction. Once you get over four-story stick-built, over a concrete parking deck, you're in a different style of construction. And I know that that's been on the news lately because of Edgewater and Avalon Bay. All around the state, you'll see people building four-story stick-built construction over a concrete deck. Why? That's the cheapest form of construction. This that is being proposed here is in another league. There are potentially on the front portion, three levels of parking. There is a platform with commercial uses. There is housing above it, potentially hotel, et cetera. This is a different style of construction that is much, has much more value per occupant. And in my opinion, that's important because the margin between the revenue that this will produce and the burden on your municipal services, the margin in your favor is much greater with this style of construction. If someone came in with four-story stick-built over a concrete deck, I could probably go through the numbers and show you that he will make a profit of, you know, revenue over costs. I can probably pretty predictably demonstrate that. But I'm suggesting to you is that this style of building that has a commercial component and a high value of construction will increase that margin significantly more. Just to return to the point of schoolchildren, which is always a topic of conversation on budget times, actually it's, I think it's a year-round topic of conversation. If, all of the studies show that taller buildings produce smaller households and fewer school-age kids. The most, there's a Rutgers study for a number of years ago that shows that. But there is more localized data. If, I picked up a copy of the Montclair Times in January of 2015, January 15. Montclair, because they're considering taller buildings in their downtown area, surveyed 3,060 dwelling units in buildings with 10 or more units. And they found one child for every nine dwelling units. But more to the point, they looked at their buildings of six stories or more in height. There were 744 apartment units in that kind of style of construction. They found one public school kid for every 25 dwelling units. So what I'm suggesting is that there is legitimate evidence out there that's very local. Montclair, I was also involved, I'm involved with a project in Ridgewood that found the same thing. You could go to the taller buildings outside of the garden apartment style, the households traditionally go down. There are clearly not only benefits directly deriving from the, from the project, but there are benefits that will flow on Washington Avenue in terms of spin-off. You're going to have new customers for the businesses there, you will have a new image. It is inevitable with a project of this size that property values in the immediate area will go up. And what it may mean in the long run, and we hope that it would mean this, is that the valley section of Belleville, rather than being a tired section, that it returned to prominence as a focal point of the municipality. In the green binder, there is the feasibility study that I talked about. And again, the applicant is willing to get you the complete study, which is 184 pages. There is the redline version of the redevelopment plan, which is, not only incorporates comments in the planning board's resolution, but the needs of the developer to construct this kind of project, as well as other documentation about the benefits of it. What I want to emphasize is that this is not conventional development. This is redevelopment. And I need to say it these three times, you're in control because of your mandated relationship through a redevelopment agreement. Despite the fact that these people have tied up the properties, they're essentially owners, you still get to pick the developer, which seems illogical. The nice thing about this project is you don't have to use any kind of eminent domain. The applicant has already tied up the properties through the private marketplace. But there are controls, both in the plan and in the, in a redevelopers agreement, that put you in the driver's seat for not only the first phase, but multiple phases of the property. I'll just repeat some topics here. In the plan, there's a limitation on large bedroom units. There are protections that go to the Board of Education, that if we produce more schoolchildren than all the statistics show, you can make an arrangement that we will cover those expenses through whatever ways you want. You could write that into the agreement. The plan says that we can't proceed without demonstrating to you that traffic will be acceptable. Now, the applicant in initial phase is going to have shuttle service to the train station. They're going to, they're, they rely on bus service. There will be a parking garage. But the, the written into the code, we're endorsing this, is a standard that no intersection within more than 1,000 feet of this property will have a level of service that will be degraded more than a level of service D. Most urbanized areas, the standard traffic pattern is level of service D. We're saying, we're not going to, we're going to assure, and we can't build other phases unless that, we can demonstrate to you that that kind of traffic acceptability will remain. Now, if this were conventional development, the most you could do to the developer is say, well, you've got to pay your fair share. You're adding 50% of the traffic, you only have to pay 50% of the cost of that signalization. And the answer is, usually nothing gets done because no one can add to that 50%. Through the redevelopment agreement, you can have the developer pay for the full freight. And that's one of the requirements in here, that the traffic be maintained at a level of service D or better. This is a project that's going to focus even on Phase 1 on Route 21. That's the major carrier of traffic. The applicant is going to connect with there, with that facility to assure that traffic, regional traffic gets to go directly to the regional system. So you have protections that are already written into the redevelopment plan. And I invite you to read it carefully. You have protections that are not yet drafted because if you move ahead, the applicant is indicated that he's willing to flip the bill for a special counsel to negotiate, one, someone who has experience in these development agreements, to help you negotiate an agreement with a developer. That can conclude controls well beyond what could normally be in a zoning ordinance. And you also have another filter, which is the planning board. If the applicant comes in under the rubric of a planned unit development and wants to get a general development plan approval, there's a whole list of studies that have to be provided. It's traffic, it's impact on revenue, it is talking about utilities, all of those things that are usually minor considerations, the applicant has to address in a formal way in a planned unit development. So even after you're through with this, the planning board has an enhanced level of One of the obvious questions is, how can we assure you that a project like this will be successful? And the first issue is, the developer, unlike the redevelopment plan, which initially says, well, we'd like you to be tepid on the upper four acres and then we'll let you go to the rest of it, we would like to reverse the order. The most important part of this project is the four acres between the railroad and Washington Avenue. That is going to stomach a lot of the improvements that will benefit the whole project. That will have three-level parking deck potentially, that will have commercial uses, that will have a train platform, that will have more than the minimum amount of parking because, and that will have buildings that if approved and if built, will lessen the risk on all the remainder of the project. That's the front piece of the project. That's the one that has to work. And if that works, the answer is, the road from there on in, as we go down the hill toward the river, will be more comfortable, substantially more predictable. In addition to those reviewers, there are people in this room that are going to review this project more carefully than you will. And those are the people that handle money. It's the banks and investors. We've done our own feasibility studies. We show them the people that are interested in the project. But no one's going to lend money on this project unless they're comfortable. And comfortable means something different today than it did in 2008. In 2008, you know, anybody seemed to become a developer. Not the case anymore. Banks have a lot of money because there are a lot of people who can't meet the standards for those loan agreements. And so not in this room are a whole bevy of experts that are going to review this project. And despite the fact that you approve this, or that the planning board approves it, this project is not going ahead unless the people that want to finance it can demonstrate that they're superiors, that there is a market for this, and this will be successful. And this is a time where these projects are starting to appear. And again, there is a huge demand for housing due to Exhibit A, me, the baby boomer type, and millennials, so-called bookends of the population. There's a, the demand for housing as the economy improves that this project can take advantage of. One of the problems the developer has now is that there's a stalemate. The applicant has spent over two years acquiring and tying up properties. We've gone through the blight process, we have a draft redevelopment plan, but to a certain degree, unless we get revised zoning, we don't have anything. We can build something, this, you know, middle-level development under the current zoning, but the answer is, to go to another stage, investors are going to say, well, I understand your design, I understand your enthusiasm, but what does Belleville say? And that stage, some kind of a commitment to advance this process is needed in order to have the investors return to us and say, we will guarantee A, B, and C. So we're in a little bit of a catch-22 now because we've come to the point where we've tied up the property, it's not going to be tied up forever, but we need some kind of a commitment. And the formal way to do that is for the governing body to adopt a redevelopment plan that it's comfortable with by ordinance and to enter into negotiation with a redevelopers agreement. Those will demonstrate to the financial community that there is a green light. Yes, there are checkpoints along the way, but for this, at this stage of the game, there is a green light. So essentially, we're asking the governing body to study the information, to respond to the recommendation of the planning board. And we would invite you to look at the changes that not only the planning board wanted, kind of after the fact, from the August 2014 plan and zoning ordinance, but look at the changes that we recommend. And there's a memo in here. There's a memo in there that not only, that describes in verbiage what the redline changes The final point I'd like to say is that there's a downside to doing nothing. Nothing has happened on this property for 30 years despite efforts to get something A project like this that doesn't move forward can be looked at to a certain degree as poisoning a piece of property. After all this work and all these positive reports, if no development occurs, that kind of hinges the future. There's a recognition now that this is not contributing to the municipality. There's a recognition that there's a blighting influence because it adversely affects investment and surrounding programs. I think one of the greatest risks frankly is to attract development that's too modest. That's like the stick-built construction over the concrete deck. Because you will see a little so-called profit margin, but the answer is, it's not going to change the land use environment. You're not going to get a commercial component that is a great ratable. You're not going to get construction jobs, you're not going to get permanent jobs. It's going to cast a pall on the remainder of this development. And that's why the development wants to put its best foot forward, which is the significant development on the first four acres. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And I know that I have resources to my right in, behind me, with our Mr. Bischof and Mr. Reagan. And I think I should sit down and have a little summary here. At this point, we want to allow time for the council and mayor to ask questions. I would like about two minutes at the end before we terminate to just give you a brief statement on what I think is important, in addition, obviously, to all the things that have been said by Mr. Bishop.
The one question I have is that, you mentioned there's financial people in the room that don't want to redo.
They're not in the room.
He misstated at that point.
Yeah, they're not in the room.
The money is not in place for this project.
The, no one will commit money without a demonstration that the municipality is in favor.
What I'm getting at is a free name you would develop. Or there's nothing to stop us then, or to stop you then, from, well, I'm going to say flipping the property to somebody else.
You can put in a redevelopment agreement the fact that you have the authority to authorize the participation of other people.
I just want to point out one thing, Mr. Mayor, that you couldn't possibly get financing in this world today, as much as they scrutinize any project without having a complete plan, and they'll look at it every which way. I deal with it as a lawyer every day, what they do in a one-family home, never mind a project with this magnitude. So without the zoning in place, yes, my clients have talked to a number of lending sources, but they'll never get a commitment from a lending source until the redevelopment plan is in place.
So that's kind of the catch-22 we're faced with.
Mr. Gashell, maybe you can answer this one for me. The claret house, do you know how high that is?
Peter Proffitt can answer better than I.
I think it's, it might be about 14, 12, 14 stories.
Okay. And, I mean, as far as the state of New Jersey, you know what the highest, highest building is?
The tallest building in New Jersey is the Goldman Sachs building. It's 781 feet tall. And in your book, I think I gave you a list of the top 10. And, you know, it's one of those ironic things on how buildings are sized, how, what the floor-to-floor height is. I know you're an engineer. They call that a 47-story building, but it's 781 feet tall. So there are, the top 15 buildings in the state of New Jersey are all 475 feet tall or higher. And some of them, I don't think, other than maybe Rebel, actually lists themselves as a building that's taller than 50 stories. But the overall height is substantial, the top 10 are over 500.
I think that's one of, you know, our concerns as well as a lot of the people in the community. There's a look and feel in our, of our community, yes, we want to upgrade, yes, we want to develop, but some of this has come across as being a little extreme, like four and a half.
Now, let me, let me just say that if someone under your current zoning came in with a 90-foot-tall building on that site, I think you'd have the same concern.
I don't know, but I think before we approved something, you know, eight to 10 stories, you already looked at things like that and dealt with them. When we're talking, you know, the scale, some of the scale I've seen in there, kind of, I question myself, reasonable, responsible, is it? That's really what I'm asking.
The, the plan that Mazur produced suggests that Phase 1 on the Washington Avenue property be limited to 275 feet in height. The redline version that you have, we've asked that, that that be 375 feet on Washington Avenue because we, we just need the numbers upfront. And as, as an engineer, you can understand that a taller building, you're limiting the number of units already. So by putting it into one building that's taller, we've got less of a, an impact on the skyline, we've got a smaller footprint. So on Washington Avenue, the, the plan that you have in front of you that would be, you know, worked out with the, with the governing body, we're asking that Washington Avenue be 375. But Mazur's plan says 275 right now.
And obviously, the value of the site, one of the values of the site is the view of the New York skyline. And that's, that, you know, that's why the coverage is there. Without that New York skyline, I don't think it would be built. That's why in Maplewood, at the top of South Orange Avenue, Hartz took over a building there because you can see the New York skyline.
One of the, one of the things we've heard recently is that for a lot of these projects, as we come out of the recession, as the dollars become more available, hopefully it'll ease up a little bit. But right now, they're saying that a lot of the banks are requiring that we have a pilot. But right now, they're saying that a lot of the banks are requiring that we have a pilot. Some of these are expected for 30 years, which to us is a problem. Do you see that kind of?
Well, let me say, first of all, is that there are no, as I say, there are checkpoints along the way here. And if you choose to go ahead and adopt a redevelopment plan, and in hand with that is the redevelopment agreement, you're still in control. You can, on the pilot, there are no statutory guidelines of what you negotiate. And as a good negotiator, I would expect you to get as much revenue as you can for the municipality. On the other hand, the developer will tell you when they're squealing too much, when they can't do it. And that's the nature of negotiation. And it's an unknown feature now.
And the bank is gonna look at what the bottom line is. So, they're gonna look at the entire picture. If part of the picture would be a request for a pilot, that might be part of the picture. But I don't think that would be a mandatory circumstance at all. It's what is the likelihood of success? What's the money gonna be coming from this project? And is it enough to repay the debt? That's what they're looking at on every wall.
We've never mentioned the word pilot in two years, not in one presentation. We've never made it a contingency. We've, we're kind of relying on that we'll be able to work out something that works for both of us. And as Mr. Steck said, you know, you guys dictate what pilot includes.
Should there be one?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, Mr. Steck, I guess you're involved in this development group now. Do you have, what's your experience with projects of this size? The whole development group?
You mean in general around the state?
Well, anywhere, the developers, themselves.
Yeah, you know, I've been, well, I've been involved in Montclair for a number of times. There's a development going up now at the corner of Bloomfield Avenue and Valley Road that's gonna have a hotel. I was involved in redrafting that redevelopment plan so it could work. That's an example of a site that's in a built-up area. And obviously, I think you have to be more cautious there. What you have here is something that is, you have greater flexibility, because the sites, you know, 20, the site in Montclair might be two acres, two and a fraction. Here we have 28 acres. You have frontage on a state highway, different animal. In Montclair, you will get on the upper floors the New York skyline. I have been involved with some larger projects. One of them, and it just shows you how fraught this is with problems, 20 years ago, I was involved with the Trump Organization when they purchased Alexander's up in Core and Seventeen. The reason that looks south is that the law across the street owned by the Australians fought it tooth and nail, and they all vaporized. So, some of these things fail, not for planning reasons, but because of, let's say, competition behind the scenes. I'll grant you, this is new territory. I've been involved with, again, when I look at BLIC declarations, I was involved in Newark with the two new prudential towers. They're building one, and then they have approval for a second one. I was involved with that project. That's a redevelopment project. They designed guidelines just for this site. If you go to Rutgers, right by the Queens campus, there's a tall building right by the train station there. That's, that was in a redevelopment project. I happened to represent the landowner prior to that, who eventually negotiated a relocation. But this, I'll have to admit to you, it's fairly unique. And I'll just return to the example of, like, you know, the claretage buildings in Verona. It's not related to any part of the housing stock, but it's a very successful project now. We have a problem here, and that, again, we're by a state highway, we're by high-tension lines. Unless you're a motorcycle enthusiast, why would you go to this site? You go across the street, you get a pretty handsome motorcycle that gets repairs done. But one of the reasons why this site is big is it wants to create its own environment, which really means its own little real estate market. People will hopefully come to this site because they see the mass transit, they see the restaurants, they see the hotel, they see the goods and services that are available, the jobs that are available. So, I can't point to you to a similar project. I can show you individual tall buildings, but this is fairly unique in terms of the acreage involved. And I don't have a magic answer for you, other than if you step back from Belleville and look at the region, and again, that's what the feasibility studies are for, something nine miles out of Manhattan, that you can see Manhattan, has great value. And if you look all around Essex County, what's happening, you know, on the ridge line of the first Watchon Mountain, that's where all the prestigious real estate was, because that's a valuable site.
Yeah, you know, we have had meetings, you know, with the developers as a council committee, so this is not, and we may say tonight. And I do have, and I will study this, but I do have a lot of concerns. The mayor knows how I feel. Some of the concerns are the schools, traffic, fire department would have to be expanded, police department. As Steve said earlier, the height of the buildings. And it's really not like the claretage development up in Verona, because those are two high-rise apartment buildings. This is more of a city within a city, or a town within a town. And if this happened, if the concept, the massive concept of this, has a lot of people in this town very concerned and upset. And I believe, and I haven't made any decision, so I don't wanna be, you know, only inquisitive by my heart. But I believe, before we bring in, if the project was ever finished or whatever, before we bring in outsiders from wherever, Portland, Manhattan, to live here, we need, and I'm a firm believer in this, we need to listen to the voice of the people that live first. This is their town. And I will go with the voice of the people. And the height, I know the people are very upset over the height of the buildings, and also the massive concept of this city within a city. But again, you know, you'll hear more about how I stand on this, and how I'm gonna go with this as the weeks progress. And, you know, I think that in one of our meetings, we talked about, I don't know if it's still in, this was a concession too, we talked about like a helicopter, helicopter loft or something of that.
What happened was, during the planning board review, the planning board said, "We don't want it." And the answer is, "That's redlined out of the plan." And part of the process, this is an informal presentation, as you know, but inevitably, because the redevelopment plan is adopted by ordinance, there's no way this can't be subject to a public hearing. It's part and parcel of the process.
Sure.
That's all I have to say for now. Can I just respond a little bit to what you said? First, this is a unique opportunity. Not many places are gonna be presented with something like this. It so happens, Belleville, in many locations, has a wonderful view of New York City, and we have had the misfortune of 28 acres not being developed for an extended period of time. Should my clients look all over, they probably can't find a site like this. That's why they chose this location, and that's why this location can work. And I understand your concern about the citizens of the town. I'm a landowner. Peter does zoning and planning. Whenever there's a project of some degree of magnitude, there are people who have a different opinion. It has to be. It always occurs. I have a church that I'm representing right now in Cedar Grove. There's 100 people at a gym. It's normal that that kind of thing occurs. You have to look at the big picture and determine what's in the best interest of the community. Another aspect of what's going on dramatically in this state is there's a move back to the cities. If you look at Montclair by the train station, unbelievable how it's being redeveloped. If you look at Bloomfield, it took a long time for them to be going, but right now, they got apartments and buildings going up all over the place. There is a gigantic move back to the city. Just take a look at Hoboken, look at Jersey City. Jersey City was the first place to use redevelopment plans, and it has dramatically changed the landscape of Jersey City. Should we have the foresight to try and go forward with this kind of thing, it could dramatically change the landscape of Belleville, and could add tremendously to jobs, to taxes, and many other aspects of it. It could tremendously change the Washington Avenue corridor. Take, for example, I'm the oldest guy around, probably, except maybe somebody else will comment, watch what I say, but Washington Avenue far exceeded Franklin Avenue or nothing as a business area, and as far as businesses and shopping, when I was a very young boy. We would be back there immediately if we started to have a project like this. We want to be on top, and if we had an opportunity to be on top of this, it would make a dramatic change in the landscape, no question about it. But it would make a dramatic change for the benefit of the community, should this be successful. And it's not gonna go anyplace unless it's going to be successful, because nobody is gonna lend the money for this kind of a project unless they've done a substantial market analysis and based on in-depth studies, and they look at every aspect of it to determine that their money is gonna be protected.
One of the things that you mentioned, or that Bob mentioned about Jersey City is, you know, it's a pretty irresponsible development that they got going on over there. They're allowing projects to go up with one-third of a parking space per unit. And because they say, "Well, people, they're gonna need their car, they're gonna take the train in New York." Well, they still go visit grandma on the weekends, you know? This project, and it's written into that markup plan, because in our planning board presentation, it was part of the presentation, or it was a concession, we've already agreed that we'll have one parking space per bedroom, as opposed to even one per unit. So, if you've got a two-bedroom apartment, you're gonna have two spaces. And then the retail commercial square footage, I think it was two per thousand. So, this project is gonna have overabundance of parking, and it's all gonna be a structured garage, all below Washington Avenue level. So, when Peter says three levels, it could be four. But right now, the plan is to have a three-level structured parking garage below the level of Washington Avenue. So, I come to a lot of these meetings, and I know that parking is a huge concern in Belleville, and we wanna take, you know, take every precaution, make sure that it's addressed. So, just, I know that one of the...
Mr. Steck, another point, I know you're a former member of the Board of Education, you have, you're an educator, you have a concern about that. We can provide many, many studies that will reflect that this type of structure will not add dramatically to the schoolchildren in the Belleville school system. The statistics that Peter cited on the buildings that are six stories or more are edited in every analysis with regard to the number of schoolchildren that come out of major development projects of the magnitude like this, and their beautiful facilities, they're not gonna have schoolchildren of consequence. Yes, people will have children born there. There'll be babies, there'll be small children. When they have children in school age, they're looking for a different kind of residence. And again, I'm speaking from reading different studies with regard to that.
And the planning board, even if we said all of that in hours and hours of testimony and studies, they still were concerned. And so, there's like a catch-all condition that they wrote in. In the event that all of these studies don't come to fruition, we get the bill. So, you know, we've really tried to make sure that we've covered all of those issues to, you know, to take away anybody's concerns about you guys getting stuck with the bill.
We also can see New York City skyline from the Colony Heights at work. But, you know, I took your plans, and I walked down there, and I walked along Washington Avenue, and then I walked down Roosevelt Avenue, walked over the railroad tracks, walked down the Main Street. I try to imagine this. I'm not against development, but in my personal opinion, this is like trying to put three dozen eggs in one dozen egg cartons, and it's just... I looked at it, first of all, it's unimaginable, picture these buildings, you know? And it's just so congested, so impacted, you know, like you're trying to, I don't know, put a stamp inside a can of tuna. I just couldn't imagine it.
But there are benefits, I understand that. It is a large project. But if you look at the nature of the design, like it's good, the design that you've seen is, you don't see any cars, because all the cars are under the level of the buildings. If you go to a middling level, garden park design, you're gonna have surface parking, you're gonna have acres of asphalt, and you're gonna have a thin margin of benefit. There, you're right that there are a lot of units, there are tall buildings, but you get something for that. You get a payback from it, and you get an environment that creates its own real estate market. But I certainly understand the need to study this.
Yeah, planning and wood in there, that the site coverage or the lot coverage had 35% open area and 55% covered by buildings, we're not even close to that. We're like 60% open area, and lot coverage with the buildings, 25% at max. So, I'm not sure how congested that is, but the site is over a million square feet, and we're covering, you know...
I agree, but it's just the complexity of it. Like, if you watched this weekend in Dubai, that tower they have, that Starlight Tower was burning, my God, how do you fight something like that? I mean, you just gotta let it burn out. And I was watching that. I could imagine one of these buildings on the top floor catching fire. How do we fight it? We don't have the equipment.
These buildings will be safer than what you might otherwise get, which is the four-story stick-built over a concrete deck. And I've had projects that have been downsized from taller buildings, simply because it was so expensive to build them. They went down to the four stories over parking, because that's the most, that's the most efficient way to construct something because of the codes. These buildings, again, I understand your concern, but I would invite you to evaluate the benefits that go along from that style of construction.
We can share with you the methods. I mean, I was director of construction at Caesar's for seven years in Atlantic City. I built the water club. I worked on every single casino there. I've been there for 33 years. I can tell you the construction methods that will go into this building with rated floors and rated assemblies and areas of recuse. Since 9/11, they've made the code even more stringent than it used to be before that tragic event. So, you've got buildings that have unbelievable safety precautions, put it on, fully sprinkler, full automatic fire alarm system, pressurized stair towers, elevators that return to the ground floor automatically. Come to our office, and we can go through all of the safety features. The fire department knows them.
I hate to stop you, Bob, but, Bob, if you want to keep...
No, no, I pretty much achieved myself. Just two minutes to respond to, one minute to respond to, that's all.
Okay. The Colony, it was built 60 years ago, is my recollection. Different time, different place, different analysis before it ever went up. As I said a couple of times, before this is ever built, if there'll be such an in-depth analysis, analysis, such a market study, we will have the greatest likelihood of success. And as far as the safety on these tall buildings, Rich has pointed out what the situation was in Atlantic City. All you have to go is to White Oak and look across at New York City, and you could probably see five of these new buildings going up at this time. If they were unsafe, they wouldn't be going up left and right like they are. So, there's ways to make these buildings safe. I certainly am no expert with regard to that, but I can observe what's going on. I think this is a unique opportunity, and I know it takes a lot of study. But this is a challenge, and Belleville could have a wonderful opportunity to be a leader. And this would be wonderful for the community, for the business community, for the town, for the tax rate. It would be the best thing that could happen for the town if this could be worth it. I thank you for your time and attention in giving us this hour to be heard.
Thank you, Bob.
I'll give the opportunity to anybody that wants to leave, if they just see a good opportunity, I'm willing to roll up and stay.